The protein is made out of gold. It got two layers with nine leaves on it. Those nine leaves represent the provinces, nine provinces of South Africa. Then if you go down a little bit, you go down, you will see there is the beads. These beads represent the heritage and the culture, the greatness of the culture of South Africa. If you go down, you get a shaft. That shaft is made out of ebony. It's a shaft that make up of ebony and it then have about six rings, which one, two, three, four, five, six. They are made out of pure gold, those rings. Then if you go, if you go down a little bit, we've got the national code of arms. The code of arms is made out of silver. Then you go down, you've got these six beads, they made out of gold. When you go down, you will see there is hands that are made out of gold. It's a shaking of hands, which shows the way, which shows the peace, the compromise. And when you go down again, there is a South African flag. South African flag, then we can start with the drum now. The drum is covered, it's made of a drum shape. It's covered with springbok skin. The reason it's a drum, it's because of Africans, when they call a meeting, they beat the drum to call a meeting. If you go down a little bit, there is two rings made out of silver, pure silver. In between those rings, you will find that there is provincial code of arms. Each province got its code of arms. If you look at it, you will see crepes. Crepes represent Western Cape. You will see Iron Peak, which represent Haute, because it's an industrial area. You will see Baobab Tree, which represent Limpo Mpo. So each and every province is represented here. Then the drum itself, it's made out of yellowwood tree. Then at the bottom again, the base is silver, it's pure silver.
Welcome back. As promised, we are now joined by Deputy Minister of Trade and Industry Nda Fikile Majola. And welcome to Parliament TV, sir.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me.
Yes, the people have raised many issues, especially the farmers are saying that they are, they are having so many challenges, but lack of resources.
Thanks, thanks very much for having me here. The, the people of Uku have raised many issues. And we're very happy that Parliament is convening here to come and meet face to face with our people, to hear the issues that they have got to raise. There are many issues on the economic front that are confronting our people at this point. And you would remember that the reason we having, the situation that we do have is because of the sluggish economic growth that we have experienced in our country over many years now. And that has been exacerbated by Covid on one hand, and then the unrest that occurred here in KwaZulu-Natal in July last year, and the floods, which have also affected this district. So all these have exacerbated the situation that we have. The, the farmers, they have raised very important issues, especially those who, the cane growers. We have a process in the D I C and in Parliament. We've been having a discussion on the Sugar Master Plan to make sure that we can rebuild the sugar industry in South Africa. What has happened is that we had had a very large sugar industry and very large plantation sector here in KwaZulu-Natal and other parts of the country. This, the sugar industry has been displaced by imports from other countries, in particular by imports from the neighboring countries such as Esuatini. So this is something that the Sugar Master Plan is trying to address, so that we can ensure that we rebuild the sugar industry. But when we build production capacity, we can be market for the sugar that we produce. So the Cane Growers Association has not been part of the master plan process. They have now been in discussions with members of Parliament. We have asked that we're going to meet with them. I don't want to come back here to specifically meet with them to discuss the issues that they face, the Cane Growers Association here in KwaZulu-Natal, but specifically in this district. The second part that has arisen here is the general problem we have of unemployment, especially of youth unemployment. There are things that the local government can do with regard to providing basic services, but if we don't, we can't grow the economy, the regional economy, the local economy will not be able to absorb that youth unemployment and to be able to deal with the challenges that arise out of unemployment, such as alcohol abuse, drug abuse, and therefore dealing to crime and violence.
Crime and violence, yes.
I have agreed with the, the community here. The M E C has said that of economic development, he's coming back. And I'm very excited that next, on the 26th, he'll be back here to have a discussion with other government departments, so that they can attend to the issues of economic development. I've made a commitment that in a month's time, I'm going to ask him that we return to this district to have a discussion. I want to have a dedicated discussion with business people here in the district. We want to bring our entities from those that are based in Haute to others are here in KwaZulu-Natal, so that they can come here, so that we can provide service right there as we meet the people. And we want to meet here in this hall.
And another one is that of the fresh produce market around here, because that is one of the sharp issue that the public raised.
Let me put it this way, the, I'll share, we have a general problem of access to markets with regard to all the products that we produce. So there's the, the problem of the fresh produce, the ones that produce bananas. Firstly, even before the issue of access to markets, have now raised the issue of the imports of bananas that are now flooding the local market and therefore displacing their product. So that's an issue that we've got to deal with. The second one is, we've got to ensure that we can open access to markets. But the people of this district, as we always say to all other districts, that we shouldn't be looking at the market, just at the district market. We should be looking at the KwaZulu-Natal market, the market of South Africa. But as part of the free African continental free trade area, we should be looking at the regional market and the continental market, because we are not going to be able to produce goods that would be absorbed just by the local market here in South Africa.
And the, the impact of the unrest regarding issues of ripening of bananas and, and other produce. What is it, what is the way forward? One of our committee members went to the one site, Ikeja, yesterday. And the farmer there was saying that they don't, you know, first thing, the, the bananas just get spoiled because of lack of machinery. And as well, they, you know, I've already mentioned to the issue of the, the pricing, because the foreign producers will sell almost half less than what they are selling, which is also a compromise. How are we addressing the challenges subsequent to the unrest also?
Firstly, let me just deal with the problem of the banana. Bananas in particular, but products that are flooding our market and displacing local producers. So this is a trade matter that we've got to deal with in our negotiations with the neighboring countries to ensure that there's proper regulation. Many of these products that get into our, our market, we know for a fact that it is products that do not follow legal processes on our borders. So we've got to ensure that there's proper border control, so that these products cannot get into our market. The second issue is, I was listening to the M E C of Agriculture. We've got to have a discussion, a department of agriculture nationally and here in the province and ourselves, to see how do we help the farmers who are affected firstly by the riots and those who are affected by the floods, because many of them have lost their businesses. I do want to bring our entities here, such as the Industrial Development Corporation and the National Employment Fund, to come and see how we can help those farmers who have been affected by the floods here in this district.
Deputy Minister, thanks so, so, so much. Our program is so full. We, we still have another deputy minister in the queue. And we will be welcoming next Minister Gaba. But thank you so, so much for being with us and for answering our call.
Thank you very much.
There was Deputy Minister Majola from Trade and Industry Department. Next is Deputy Minister of Agriculture and Land Reform. Just stay tuned.
The National Council of Provinces is taking Parliament to the people of KwaZulu-Natal from 14 to 18 November 2022. Taking Parliament to the People is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in Parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of Parliament, provincial legislatures, and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings, where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People 2022. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.za. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better.
Bestela ewa tu, ubakbe konoka ndakanda for Uklima. We are also asking for ubakbe konaki trainings, esenzwayo, for e-farmers, for abandabatyalayo, by training, because we have a lot of people that are staying emakaya with no training, but inislabi ikona. We also want to ask ubakewa ewa 11, sipegelele wana tigazindo zokiala, sipegele winiislabi, and U government to contribute into that, sitrainelwa bandu. Thank you so much. And diabongwa, obukmani opportunity to pass indaba, yom twanuchonile, that has not even been addressed here. Your presentation is sure deliberately, as bonwayo enteleen. Tomorrow, we are burying a child because of that. Thank you.
Number three, thank you, sis.
Fundo esenzwayo kuley richi ngetu, azalainwe ne job market to address the unemployment. Because if e education singai addressi, uku taihamsane ne job market, then sizo kubekasipaninking.
Ngizome lo mama, abalimayo, ama sinyasitizenze tututu, nesinyayintangano ezlimayo. Sia kela, ubapatiswa uki, abaspege delega kulu, ngomintlo soye etu, ksisza ulusha, luko azukzenze la izinto, ngonokwazo, ngoba imostiyabo, aba abafetifafa, basa etoli imsebezi. So kwa funera bazamukuzenza la izinto, sia sevenza, so mama, asunakiwe etututu. Nala slima kona kumihiwe, uma seslimile sesevuna, sijkanale nganeseuvaz, ngiasabu gushuti ama paga, watwai won. So manje sia kela, snaregele, esuoma badala, esisamukuni magaleten. Gibesa ngendelela futi, nasenda wenuktwa isengamtu, ndagusho, obasunai uma ma wetula, uyala zutaba, wimi kasa oye zinto zakona. Bayasogo olabanduma lapayana bassebezi, ngoba bakenda wenuktwa yama kalat. So imka so, bagwaz kwa keda, na tu kwa sliupa beskalen.
We are nearing the end of our broadcast, as we just concluded the last public hearing of day two of our four-day program. We heard from the public raising their concerns relating to agriculture and rural development. We are now joined by the Minister, the Deputy Minister, I mean to say, of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development, Me Gaba. Mama, thank you so much for joining us and welcome to Parliament TV.
Thank you very much for having us as well.
Yes, yes, ma'am. The public raised so many issues regarding land reform and agriculture. For instance, Ikeja, you were there also yesterday. Can we just give us an update as to what really happened and how the department is going to address issues there?
Definitely the problems that the farmers, especially emerging farmers at Ikeja, where we went to meet them, which is supposed to be a farmer protection support center, but it is in a very bad shape, because it has not yet been renovated. Actually, that is the key and the center which would support them all, whether you are in banana industry or sugar cane or chicken. But unfortunately, it has not been attended to. A strong follow-up is going to be made. And secondly, their own problems, challenges that they experience include that there was once a processing machine, a mill, in Umzimku. It was then closed down. And as a result, the cost of transporting sugar cane to where, whether it's in any way here, Wulens or, but it's very far. And therefore, it affects their own production, because it sometimes rot without having reached the processing plant. The roads become a key challenge, because they have to transport it, particularly post the disasters and the heavy rains. The other one is the fact that they produce banana. And banana does not require too much handling. If you want to reach the market, it is still good condition, including trucks that are meant to actually preserve whatever moisture or temperature when you transport them. That was transport need, road, it suffers itself. The place, which is a packing house, there are no packing houses there. You can see that this is actually a non-starter for any farmer. Yes, the bigger issues, of course, we are a cluster together with Trade and Industry, Agriculture, and all those departments that has everything to do with the economic development through agriculture. But without dwelling much on the challenges they have, the, the plight and the poverty was, was actually very glaring on rural women who are actually working there. I remember I've just come from Indonesia, there was a G20 focusing on rural women, how much we should empower them and it should be ensuring they don't get such suffering. But if the very employers, in the form of farmers, have such challenges, it becomes a bigger challenge for those who expect to be employed and paid and taken care of by the farmers. So they were both joined in that discussion. The plight that they were, the, the pleas that they were making to us as government was all-inclusive. And I admit that some change must, in programs, must be followed to address those cries. Yes, some of them have met here, because they, they told us that they would present their cases here, which is very important. And I appreciate that now you are going to amplify this need, because we have to talk about it, we have to address, to address it in the, in the country and in the world, that we do have such pockets of poverty, where even those who must help are helpless.
Yes, and, and ma'am, also the floods affected other areas, including the Horseshoe project and, and others. So is the department doing something?
Indeed, we are doing something. Unfortunately, I did visit Horseshoe. And despite the challenges and the degradation of the environment, poverty at all. But I want to say, that's a beautiful area geographical and environmentally. You can run agri, agri tourism there very much. But in any way, I, I want to make this admission. The other first program of addressing small producers, farmers rural, was in place, which spoke about agri parks, where you would have equipment, that is mechanization, also water, also packhouses with water, so that you can enter that process of washing them, drying them, and then packing them and ready, and also provision of transport that has got regulated temperatures for them to do well. That was agreed. But look at the Horseshoe, Ikeja and other areas, the space is too wide. It wouldn't work, because from where you are in a corner, you would have to travel before you get to the packhouse. You don't play those games with agricultural production. So where I stand is that they then changed together with the stakeholders, given that program and that budget and that year. They then said, let's have what we call a farmer production support center, where you would actually gather all the equipment you would require, whether it's potato blender or harvest seed planters and every other thing that is required. But, and then have its own management. Because one of the weaknesses, where you heard everyone calling for a tractor, others saying they do have that they can't maintain, is the fact that when you talk of asset management, it's not about counting. It's also about ensuring that it went through the gate with farmer number five. Farmer number five brought it back. The engineers inspected, washed it, cleaned it, oiled it, and tested if it's in good order for the next farmer to come and take, where you support yourself with low, low, low belts in order to transport them forward, because you can't have in one farm or one center, all the implements that you require. And in fact, if you need a plow, it's once. The next one you need is a disc. The next one you need is a, is a blender. You can't therefore say each farmer must have all this, because during the season, each one will be used once. So my, our appeal and our approach that we stand for together with the province of K Z N, I'm very, very happy with the cooperation that we experienced with the leadership, the cabinet, as well as our own colleagues. We will ensure that we integrate. Remember, this department has been rural development under a ministry and a minister, and agriculture and rural development separated under a mini. But we need then to be one ministry. That has been approved, but I'm sure there's resistance, because each one of these departments, their own systems, their own management, their own offices. So it is important then that even before we integrate, we, we bring them together as one. Let's integrate with the budget, so that the plan, there's one plan for Uku. If, if we know we're gonna go for grain, let's observe the season. For sunflower, for maize, all that, that is going to be in that family. And then the ongoing process of sugar cane as an economic driver, you then have to support it very much integratedly, bringing in the whole cluster of economy, which includes the trade and industry, because if you want to survive them, to survive, bring closer the processing, sugar cane milling, brought, bring it, then think about diversification. What will you do by the products that come out of sugar cane? You can see that the idea was when you run away from su, from sugar tags, you also think about macadamia nuts. You can see there, people are getting out of bananas, out of sugar cane, and, but it's not gonna help us a lot. Because we've got a lot of experience of people who have been in this business of sugar cane, bananas, here K Z N. That's almost a culture. Talk about the issues of why were they not well supported post the disaster? I, I think there is a lot that was required for a person to access this fund, because you needed unemployment care reports, SARS registration, of which some of our farmers were not indeed technically supported to produce such business plans. To an extent, you find them others saying, we were told, we, we did submit, we were told now of late that will be given seedlings and inputs. But they are not supposed, we are not supposed as government to be talking about seedlings and so on. That's a normal support. The support they are talking about is the loss. The cabbage that was washed away, the harvest of grain that was washed away, was already ready to be harvested. So for a farmer, that's a loss. Then we will go back, because our budget for disaster was operated in one center. Maybe issues specific to a farmer were not totally addressed. Some lost their piglets, their sheep, their goats. It was indeed for a farmer. A farmer can cry for a small chicken taken by a hawk.
And very sentimental to them, definitely, to their, to their produce as well.
And mainly it's women, because rural women engage in agriculture as a way of life and their culture.
Ma'am, just in closing, we, we just would love to get your view with regards to now, Taking Parliament to the People, the flagship program of the N C U P. Do you think, and, and what you heard from the people, do you think this is taking us forward?
Thank you very much for that question. It does a lot. It appeals to even you as a person in that space of being in the ministry, to be closer to your, to the, and the atmosphere of seeing the face and the body language of someone who is appealing for an implement. But number two, there's no way of taking Parliament to people, interacting with the people, and actually understanding where they stand and how they evaluate your own service delivery to them, without writing, without having to protest, but to come direct as per invitation and say, this is how you look like, you need to wash up your face a little for us to go along. I think I'm very proud of our people, especially characterized by young people in this. in this particular engagement. There were many and they were actually having a lot to do with their communities. Young people were not only thinking about their problems. They were talking for their communities. And our strategy of educating them through Narisak gives us a better future. You can see these are future leaders. But i- in closing, I do want to say, there's no way we will follow as the wild coast. Because the wild coast belt starts from Sarapatman, uh, all these small Lengana cities, small Lengana towns up to, uh, Heriguala. And that is a string of the poorest district municipalities as identified. Hence that they are in the district development. Our coming together today, we were able to talk about beyond Heriguala and we were able to talk about beyond Alfredso and so on, seeing economic opportunities along the coast. I think the two provinces will engage better in order for us to have a a fully fledged coastal development in terms of transport, in terms of trade and improving. What did the M E C, uh, 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 of K Z N on economics was very clear as to what we we will do.
M E C do.
And at the M E C do, I'm sure there will be a lot of benefit and actually, uh, uh, spin-offs of what they want to do. Particularly that if I were to go home, I was equal to two more hours to get to Flegstaff because the airport is so far. I can't sleep knowing that I'll fly straight to Margate and then straight to East London and crisscross our country. And also, I want to say, our people want to behave beyond their horizon. That we are here now, their voices will be heard throughout South Africa and beyond.
Yes. Ma'am, thank you so, so much for talking to Parliament TV. We are grateful that you came, you graced our shores in in Parliament TV. We hope that next time when we make a call, ma'am will let it come and also just share the content with the public, serve the 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 people. As we are saying, we are committed to 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 saving the people and wanting to make their lives better. Thank you so much, ma'am. That was Deputy Minister of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development, May Gaba, joining us from Ugu. That is it from us today. We will see you again tomorrow with a packed lineup of activities taking place here at the, at at the hall where Taking Parliament is happening as well as now that tomorrow it will be the last day of the, uh, the 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 side visits. And on that note, let us just say, good night.
The National Council of Provinces is taking Parliament to the people of KwaZulu-Natal from fourteen to eighteen November twenty twenty two. Taking Parliament to the people is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of parliament, provincial legislatures and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People twenty twenty two. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.zre. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better. The National Council of Provinces is taking Parliament to the people of KwaZulu-Natal from fourteen to eighteen November twenty twenty two. Taking Parliament to the people is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of parliament, provincial legislatures and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People twenty twenty two. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.zre. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better.